... smaller chunks of debt through existing programs. The administration is also preparing for a new broad cancellation effort that's through a longer rulemaking process, and it could be reversed by future administrations. Next week, the Education Department will convene stakeholders, including representatives of civil rights groups, colleges, loan servicers, military members, and current students, to begin figuring out the new path. The NAACP, which is participating, released an open letter suggesting plus loan borrowers, that's parents who took on debt for their children, be made eligible for income-based repayment and eventual forgiveness. The Biden administration says it's so far canceled debt held by some three and a half million Americans. That includes the latest effort announced yesterday, which forgives $9 billion in student loan debt. I'm Novosavu for Marketplace.
Let's do the numbers. The Dow S and P and Nasdaq futures are down, with the Dow future off more than 100 points. The 10-year Treasury yield is down at 4.7%. Marketplace Morning Report is supported by C3 AI. C3 Generative AI provides chat GPT enterprise search that is verifiable, secure, and accurate across all enterprise data. Learn more at c3.ai. This is Enterprise AI. And by Vantage Score. Vantage Score's credit scoring models help expand financial inclusion by leveraging predictive analytics at vantage score.com. The race is on to replace Kevin McCarthy as House Speaker. Representatives Steve Scalise and Jim Jordan are both moving to take over, but another government shutdown may be looming. My Marketplace colleague David Brancaccio spoke with Ian Bremmer, founder and president of the political risk consultancy Eurasia Group about this congressional mess.
The political theater here is fascinating, but you know, if you're running an organization that wants to understand the world because you're making big money decisions, given a headless House of Representatives, I mean, how are we supposed to understand this thing? For instance, Ian, chances for a government shutdown in November, higher or lower, do you think?
They've just gone way up. And if what people were most concerned about over the last couple of weeks was can you keep Ukraine funded and can the U.S. maintain that policy, that has just been kicked down the priority list because people are worried about, are you going to have a government shutdown and will you be forced to do a 1% contraction of spend across the board? That has impact on every American in a way that Ukraine feels a heck of a lot farther away.
Right, so if the people in Ukraine are searching for money and other resources for a new spring counteroffensive, you know, next year sometime, this now seems more remote given the turmoil in Washington.
Absolutely. This was a horrible week for President Zelensky in Ukraine. His ability to ensure that he will have the continued support to even maintain present level of military operations, never mind a potential second counteroffensive, those all now look like a pipe dream. And remember, this is coming from the U.S. President Biden, who has said, as long as it takes, whatever it takes, we're there. That lasted a matter of months. The Americans are no longer in a position to provide that. And of course, the U.S. is providing the overwhelming share of military support.
Hmm, I mean, this is partially answering the next question. Ian, chances for Congress to get anything else done for the rest of the year?
We don't yet know what the rules are for an acting speaker in terms of what they can and they can't actually rule on. We will find out on the basis of the rulesmaking inside the House as they go on. But certainly, the ability to continue to get significant funding support, anything the House puts together, anything that can pass the House that the Speaker would put forward, would be dead on arrival in the Senate. So you're looking at a showdown between the two houses. And again, you're looking at the most important geopolitical issue that the United States has taken a leadership role on. The Ukrainians left in the lurch, the Europeans extremely concerned about the future of the transatlantic alliance.
Ian Bremmer, founder of the political risk consultancy Eurasia Group. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm Nancy Marshall Genzer with the Marketplace Morning Report. From APM, American Public Media.
This week on Inside Appalachia, federal officials are finally taking action on Black Lung. One reporter asks, what if this had happened in any other industry?
There would be outrage, and there would be response, and there would be response quicker than what has come. I don't know why people don't seem to care about coal miners.
You can hear Inside Appalachia every Sunday at 6:00 PM on Radio IQ.
Radio IQ is broadcasting and digital on WVTF Roanoke, WRQ Charles City, Richmond, WURV Richmond, WVTU Charlottesville, WVTW Charlottesville, WVTR Marion, WISE FM Wise, WQIQ Spotsylvania, WIQR Lexington, WEHC Emory, and in Richmond on 92.5 and Fredericksburg on 94.9. Radio IQ, a service of Virginia Tech.
Welcome to NewsHour. It's live from the BBC World Service in London. I'm Tim Franks. Two weeks after Azerbaijan took over the enclave of Nagorno-Karabakh and the population fled, we find what's left.
The place is scattered with belongings. There's a plastic bag here full of clothes. You've got a real sense, looking at the scene here, of the panic that must have existed as people tried to flee from the border.
We'll hear from one of the refugees, bereaved and bewildered, also a rescue worker battling the floods in northeast India. This year's Nobel Prize for Literature goes to the Norwegian Joun Fossa, and much ado about an ancient floorboard unearthed in eastern England.
The most famous actor that has trodden those boards is William Shakespeare himself, and that is just mind blowing to us here in Kingston, West Norfolk.
All that to come after the news.
Hello, I'm David Harper with the BBC News. The European Union's Foreign Affairs Chief has warned that political infighting in the United States is threatening Washington's ability to fund the Ukrainian military. Josep Borrell said EU countries would not be able to replace any loss in American support. He was speaking at a conference of European leaders. The U.S. Congress omitted funding for Ukraine from a recently agreed budget deal. Mr. Borrell said this had been a...
The October 5th, 2023 city council meeting is hereby called to order, and I'll ask our clerk to please call a roll.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Here.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Here.
Mr. Pretty?
Here.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Here.
Ms. White Boyd?
Here.
Mr. Volason will be absent today, and Mayor Lee?
Here, in a corner, Mr. President. Let me just state that council meetings will be televised live and replayed on RV TV, Channel 3, on Thursdays at 7:00 PM and Saturdays from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and video streamed through Facebook Live at facebook.com/roanokeba. Council meetings are offered with closed captioning for the deaf or hard of hearing. And again, good morning to everyone. I want to first talk about the items for action. There's a communication from the mayor's office requesting that council convene in a closed meeting to discuss vacancies on certain authorities, boards, commissions, and committees appointed by council pursuant to... Pursuant to Section 2.2-3711 Code of Virginia as amended. And the list of vacancies is included with your agenda for this meeting. I need a motion.
So, Ms. Reynolds, second.
All right, Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye. Thank you. There's a communication from Councilmember Patricia White Boyd, Chair of the City Council Personnel Committee, requesting that council convene in a closed meeting to discuss personnel matters pursuant to Section 2.2-3711 Code of Virginia as amended. I need a motion.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye. Thank you. There's a walk-on item. There's a communication from the city attorney that council convene in a closed meeting to consult with legal counsel regarding current litigation, where such consultation or briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body pursuant to Section 2.2-3711 Code of Virginia as amended. I need a motion.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye. Thank you. All right, add them listed on the 2:00 PM council docket requiring discussion, clarification, or any deletion to the 2:00 PM agenda, or any topics for discussion by the mayor members of council.
But I'm not sure if these need to be formally added. I just asked if Bob Mayr could be planning to do this during his briefing to just go over briefly what we did during our strategic retreat, to just speak about some of those items.
You know, the briefing, what briefing are you...
Well, the city manager has a briefing during every meeting. So just ask him during that section to cover the strategic retreat, some of the items that we worked on.
Okay.
Yeah, that's no problem.
Okay, we can do that. All right.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. I do have a couple of inquiries that I will have for the 2:00, and I just wanted to ask the manager if, and it deals with 71A and as well as B. I just have a couple of questions, and I just wanted to ask if staff could be here to answer. Mainly, I'm just interested in the estimation cost for the rehab, the project, which is the Fishburne Cottage. I just want to know how much that is going to be, if they have an idea how much it's going to cost, and how much of that comes from the Friends of Fishburne on their fundraiser. And then on B, with regards to the safety campaign, let's see here, how will, and my question is, we're going to be, how's the campaign going to help reduce the speeding in the neighborhoods, since several neighborhood associations have complained about the speeding, you know, through their neighborhoods? And with this campaign, I just want to know how this is going to affect that.
Sure.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other suggestions or questions or additions or deletions? All right. We'll go right on now to briefings, and I'm going to call on Mr. Spencer, our attorney, to guide us through this, through the briefings.
Thank you, Mayor. I can call our illustrious Commissioner of Revenue up. First one we have is a change that he's asked that we bring forward. I think it's a wonderful idea. I could put my editorial thumb on the scale, so to speak, but I'd like to give him an opportunity to speak to council as to what he's hoping to accomplish with this proposed change in our code.
Thank you, Mr. Spencer. Mayor Lee, members of council?
Morning.
Good morning.
Morning. So, the proposed ordinance is to eliminate late filing penalties for taxpayers, individual taxpayers, on personal property tax. The way that we currently do personal property tax for individuals by and large is that we run DMV reports and we pick up the information from DMV, and then normally everything, we get everything in and then tax a vehicle and they're on their way. Sometimes there are delays in reporting, and the way code is currently established, those people are assessed a 10% tax atop, I'm sorry, a 10% penalty atop the tax, okay? What that amounts to is us billing $141,000 in penalties every year, and out of the whole pool of personal property tax, it's a drop in the bucket. And what we're able to collect out of that for last year was only $68,000. So this is something that we frequently field calls on, taxpayer complaints from information not being received in a timely manner. And my staff in the personal property tax section and myself spend quite an amount of time trying to work with taxpayers and get everything straightened up. So I also followed up with other commissioners in localities across the Commonwealth for localities that do what's called filed by exception, which is, we assume year to year that your vehicles that you have remain the same, maybe be taxed the same way. We don't require an annual filing. And whenever we get an update from the DMV, that's considered the new filing, your new vehicles added, old ones removed, et cetera. Of the 32 that responded who do filing by exception, 24 do not have late filing penalties. So it's 75% of those who did respond, who do business in a way that my office currently does, don't have this late filing penalty. I feel like it's going to be a benefit to taxpayers for those who do incur the late filing penalty, and it's going to be a relief on my office, given the amount of calls that we do receive from taxpayers on this. And I did have a meeting with the city manager back in May about this, and I don't want to speak on his behalf, but I feel like it was, we were on the same page. Okay. The only thing I would add is I would affirm that, that yes, we talked about this, and we've just been looking for the right time to kind of schedule this, and certainly we support what the commissioners propose as well. The effective date is January 1st, so that we have the, we're just going to start the tax year off fresh. We need time for our new system, PCI, to get all the updates into the system so that we can make sure this rolls out smoothly.
All right. Mr. Pretty?
I have other questions about, I'm sure they do as well.
Let me ask you, is your mic turned up? I'm having trouble hearing.
No, I just don't, sometimes I don't speak directly into it or very loudly.
All right, I'm sorry.
I'm a little bit telepathic, so I can throw it over where the commissioner is. A few notes, I mean, first, if it's January 1st, just when this does come before us, it does say effective upon passage. If we can have...
You will see it in front of you.
Yeah, of course, that will be updated. If you give them a...
It has been, and it's at your place.
The number you said was $141,407 was billed. Is that late fees for anyone that's assessed a late fee, or just the classification that we're looking for?
Just the classification that we're looking for.
But what have the other localities found to be their, how do they incentivize people to pay on time if we eliminate the penalty? And I definitely support doing so, I'm just hoping to get an answer to that question. And then, why not include the, I think this excluded, like, commercial or business-related personal property vehicles?
So, to your first question, this is not an incentive for on-time payment. This is not a delinquent payment, that I, penalty that I'm proposing that we scrap. It's just when individuals file, like, provide us the information for vehicles to get taxed, right? So it's not on delinquent bills first.
Okay, so these are people who are being captured and being assessed a penalty, even though they had no control over, unless they came here directly and told you, I purchased it this day, and I want to pay my taxes right now, which I think a few people proactively...
Most people go through the DMV, and we pick it up through the DMV process.
So for the city attorney, would we still then need to vote in order to extend the deadline when it comes to being able to apply to everyone? So that this eliminates penalties for people captured in that situation, but we still have an authority to move the deadline if necessary if something happens. And most of the time, it seems we do so retroactively whenever we face a situation to not penalize certain persons.
Yes, we would have to act separately on those. Part of that, remember, was going to the PCI program. We moved a lot of things so that we could get the system on board. This will just require the code change before you hand it out, become an effective January 1, 2024. So we still may have some of that, but we hope that those days are passed as PCI program has been implemented.
Okay, but my hope is just that ultimately, collectively, we can make sure the messaging is, we still want you and expect you to pay on time, but for these people, you will not face a penalty, just so that people don't see the news that you don't have to pay on time.
Again, it's not, it's not a penalty on late payment. This is for filing, getting us the information, not us receiving the money, but providing us the information so that the vehicle can be taxed.
All right, I just more broadly, all right.
I file, and then I pay. And this is penalties for filing late.
Okay, thank you.
Where we're getting most of the information anyhow from DMV.
Yeah, I think that clears that up. Thank you.
And Councilmember Pretty, what was your other question?
We talked about the commercial and business aspect of it.
Yes, this is only applying to individuals. Businesses still have to file with us their tangible property lists that get taxed anyways, and those are required filings. I mean, we need to have the lists, so we would keep those, the vehicles as tied to the businesses. This would only apply to individuals.
Thank you. Those are all my questions, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Commissioner, I just want to make sure we're going to be good with PCI, you're not going to have any problems.
I don't anticipate so, and this is why I request that the date that we go live on this be January 1st, so that we can have time for the programmers to develop and make the necessary changes in the system.
We have time to do that?
Yeah.
I think it's, okay. I was just curious, because I know it, you still got to work with PCI, make sure it's still functioning the way we want it to, and then to add something new, we don't want to confuse her.
I think this will be manageable. I think this will be manageable.
Or confuse him, we'll call it a him. PCI should be a him. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments from council?
No, good.
All right, Ms. Moon?
Yeah.
You do not?
No, I don't have any. It was answered. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
With council's approval, we'll bring this back at the next meeting for adoption?
Okay.
Okay. The next three are actually kind of together, and they are the changes which we previously considered. I think the language has been tweaked a little bit differently since the last time we were before you, and it is the idea...
Mr. Spencer?
Yes?
Can you help me out a little bit? I'm having trouble hearing. Could you hold that mic?
Will do. Is this better?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. What we're attempting to do here is have the city's Arts Commission, Human Services Advisory Board, as well as the Gun Violence Prevention Commission to operate under the same procedures in our city code. So you'll see the three code changes, the language mirrors each other in the three ordinances, so that for annual funding under the general fund, now I want to be clear on one thing, this means that general fund recommendations made by these three boards, council-appointed boards, would come back as we have historically done for the Arts Commission, as we have historically done for the Human Services Advisory Board, for council review and approval on general fund items. Now, if there's a grant which council already has the opportunity to approve, that will be council's approval of those expenditures, so that if recommendations are made for the city manager to spend money in a certain way from a grant, let's take the Arts Commission, we have National Endowments of the Arts grant, that would not come back a second time when the grant's approved, that would be the opportunity for council to provide input as these measures are currently drafted. So we're looking to just follow that standard process, and on all three, treat all three the same.
So you're talking about bringing it back for adoption at the next council meeting?
It is up to council. Council can do one of several things. Council can say, this looks great, we'd love to vote on it now. I would recommend if you say, this looks great, Mr. Spencer, make sure we have the finalized version ready for consideration this afternoon, or we can do what we've done with the previous one, we come back next council meeting to address it. So it is up to council how you all wish to handle these. If you think it's so routine, and that, hey, this is what we've asked for, it's ready to go. I'll be able to have everything, we've got drafts, we have right in front of us, we are ready to go.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Pretty?
Seeing that this has been in front of us for almost a few months now, maybe just not in the current form, and we finally have the language here so that they can move forward with their current practices that they're following, I think it'd be appropriate to act on it today, and if so, I'd even move it now, or if you'd feel 2:00 PM were more appropriate.
Are there any further discussion on it? Could you move around?
Thank you. With regards to, and I don't want this to be taken the wrong way, I appreciate all that's been said and done, I do have some questions. One of my questions deals with the, let me just start with the Human Services Advisor Board. I'm trying to think, when do they receive grant money? I know we give them money from the annual budget that they come back and give to the service agencies. When do they receive grant funding? I know the Arts Commission receives grant funding, just like what you said.
Right.
When is it, give me an example, when the HR, I mean, the Human Services Advisory Board receives a funding other than annual?
I personally can't recall.
Okay, because I see you have it here where it says they receive grant funding.
But there's always that possibility.
Yeah, probably the most recent, and it may never occur again, it was obviously the ARPA funding. So there was, there were grant dollars received with ARPA, those dollars were provided to the Human Service Advisory Board, they met and actually delegated those out to those same social service providers that you just mentioned that were general fund. That's probably the only instance that I know that they've, now, it doesn't mean they couldn't, the human health services at the federal level could certainly issue grants that they could compete for and secure, but I don't recall anything other than...
Yeah, because I've never recalled in my years that, like I said, I do know of the Arts Commission. And the other one that still gives me pause is the Gun Violence Prevention Commission. I still have concerns with that one, because councils still have not had the opportunity to discuss the purpose of the commission, and I know you all are doing the code amendment for that, and I just feel that we actually had the matter on the council's retreat agenda, but we didn't have time, time was not available to discuss gun violence. The mayor had asked to discuss the commission for it to be part of the retreat, and like I said, we did not. So with that said, I still think that the discussion still needs to occur before we take action, then have to go back and change some things, because there is things in this ordinance that I still have pause on, or I would prefer to have discussion about before we actually do the adoption. So I have no issues with the Arts Commission being amended, the code being amended for the Arts Commission, nor with the Human Services Advisory Board, but I do think we need to have that discussion. Council as a whole needs to discuss where we go from here with the Gun Violence Commission. My thoughts.
Vice Mayor?
Well, I will disagree to a certain extent, that we had a very robust discussion of community safety, and this item could have been brought up by any council member during the retreat, and it was not, so there's that. And I think now's the perfect time to discuss any questions that council members have. We need to stop kicking this can down the road. Let's have the questions and the conversation now, get this resolved, and move forward.
All right, any other comments?
I would just concur on that regarding the strategic retreat. I think there was a request for it to be directly on the agenda, but we opted to consider it under community safety instead, and I was surprised that it wasn't brought up or discussed at that time. Further, I think that this is just limited to making sure that the practices that are currently being done, that we understand from council with all three of these boards and commissions, to put them in place. that we understand from council with all three of these boards and commissions to put them in place formally and operationally. I do think there may be another point in time with which we may want to have a discussion on the power and responsibilities of the Gun Violence Commission, but I would not want to hold up that discussion or these grants in order for that to be done. And so.
Are we holding up grants, Mr. Spencer?
My apologies, not the grants, but hold up the process with which the commission is waiting. Mayor, it was discussed at the.
Hold up, hold up, just keep the thing going back forth.
Apologies, back and forth. At the audit committee meeting, I understand that we were waiting to take action on this until the audit was formally published. This was published during the summer, and then we did not have an audit committee meeting until recently on the matter. The items that were discussed in that audit and the recommendations that were brought forward did not go into the broader scope and responsibilities of the commission, but it did recommend formalizing the process that they are currently following within city code. And I think it'd be appropriate for us to go ahead and do that now. And I do think that regarding the commission, that there are more discussions that will be had and that need to be had. But I, we have already held up this once in order to wait for one report back, and I think we have that information now. I'd like to see this formally in code, and we can discuss as other items regarding the commission and its membership at another point.
And Mr. Mayor, if I could just say one thing. If council were to choose to adopt the outline that's here, that in no way means that you can't make changes based on a future conversation. So I just give council those options. If you could adopt this later, think there needs to be a more robust change perhaps, if your discussion dictates such. And then we could do that. But this outlines at least the basic understanding. We worked with the auditor, at least Laura Corini in my office did, to make sure that we at least captured the elements that were part of that audit. To clarify that, recommendations to assist city council and city manager in determining what funds should be provided in the city's budget for resources to assist in reduction of gun violence and for the work of the commission. So we tried to address those issues, and I hope we were successful.
Let me just say that, and I may call on the Vice Mayor to comment on this. I think one issue that we wanted to look at based on the audit on this Gun Violence Commission is, does council have knowledge and say-so over where, how money will be spent? And does this change that or affect that? How does that?
Yes, Mayor, it does. It's to general funds, not as to the grants.
So is most of the money we're getting for gun violence prevention, is that grant?
There were a couple of large grants that were received, especially I remember a large one from the Attorney General's Office. And when those, at the time those grants were accepted, that would be similar to the National Endowment of the Arts grants. That would be the opportunity for council to have input as it's currently drafted.
Yeah, I guess, and that, if I may, Mayor, that, I just want to make sure that that's understood. The way it works right now is if, say, we get a grant from the, we make application for a grant to the Attorney General's Office, which we often do for the police department in addition to work that the Gun Violence Prevention Commission might be doing. And that grant is received, then that grant will come here for approval and appropriation. And inside that grant, it will describe how those dollars will be used. So it may, for example, say, will be used for activities addressing violence among youth that might be involved in gang activity. It might say that, that kind of description. At that point, the council historically has two options that it would take. The most common option is council approves the acceptance of that grant and appropriates those funds. And then at that point, the, the staff is actually then responsible for implementing that grant. And again, that's very common. DCJS handles all of those grants for the Attorney General. That's very common in what we do in the police department. The other option that council currently has also is you could still do that at this point and also seek additional information. For example, Councilmember Pretty did that when we received a grant that was related to the, the work that the governor had approved, the Attorney General's Office through DCJS had approved some additional funding for law enforcement. And you remember there was a license plate reading component in that grant description. Council approved that grant and appropriated the funds. Councilmember Pretty asked that that particular item be brought, provided additional information to council. So right now, that's kind of the practice. Right now, that is how you would handle with a grant piece of, of that. If, and that would not change under this provision. That would still be, so we'll make sure council, when a grant comes, council still has the opportunity to review how that grant is going to be used and approve it or not. And also at that time, ask if they want any additional steps to follow with that. The general fund piece right now, absent this change, the current practice is once the budget is approved for whatever amount of money that would go, in this case, we're talking about the Gun Violence Prevention Commission, then that would be done administratively. Those items would not come back absent this, this change. So this change actually now would require those recommendations for general fund expenditures to come back to council for further consideration, very similar to how the grants currently are in front of council. That's not the practice currently. That's what this, that's what this would change. But just so you understand kind of how the, how the grants are managed as they move through. And, and probably, I'm guessing, 90% of the grants that we would receive are likely to come through the DCJS. There certainly could be other grants that might be related to gun violence that wouldn't come from that source, but almost all the grants are coming through that DCJS model, much as we do with the, with the police department as it comes through. Hopefully, that helps a little bit on how that's worked through.
Yes, Mayor.
I, I think, thank you, Bob, for clarifying some of that. I think that's probably the, the way to do it. I think we just need, not just for council, but for the, for the, for the community and for the residents and folks who are watching. If we could just go through the process of how it works, you know, and I thought that's what we were going to do when it said briefing, just so people will understand this process, because there are a lot of questions out in the community about how, how do you do those grants? So if somebody could do that at some point, whether it's now or whenever, that would be really helpful for, I think, people who are, who are watching.
Yeah, and I can.
Even some of the organizations are curious how.
Yeah, and I can kind of quickly run through, and it's a little bit, it, it will differ depending on the grants.
Right, right, yeah. And that was helpful, and that's what I'm saying. So I think that's, that would be really helpful.
So I can give you kind of a general.
Sure.
And I'll, and I'll give you two examples since we're talking about three different, three different groups here. So I'll use an example from the Gun Violence Prevention Commission, and I'll use an example from, from arts.
Arts, okay, yeah.
Just to kind of show those two. So with the Gun Violence Prevention Commission, so there was, and I'll use two different examples inside. I won't say Gun Violence Prevention Commission. I'll say Gun Violence Prevention. So I'll use two examples with that. One, I kind of alluded to, which was part of the governor's Bold Blue Line initiative that he established, set aside funding for additional gun violence reduction funding to come to, to law enforcement or to municipalities, really. But municipalities were using it for law enforcement. In that case, there was a, in, in what the governor made available through DCJS, there was a broad kind of description of the kinds of things those dollars could be used for. It was a pretty, pretty lengthy list that municipalities could choose from. Our police department in that case identified eight or nine different types of items. So you'll remember some of these, some of these dealt with things that would be used, for example, if they were actually conducting a search warrant in a dangerous situation. So there were ballistic shields that were used. There were some night vision goggles that were used with it. And, and then I had mentioned the earlier example with that, so with the license plate reader that they would use. So what they did is that information was provided to, in this case, DCJS. DCJS said, yes, it's on the list. These are eligible items, and they awarded the grant to us. That item then appears on your agenda as a grant award. And inside the packet that you receive and it's available publicly, it actually said, you're getting this grant for these purposes. And it had that, those uses listed on there. And then there was discussion among what you all had, and that was when Councilmember Pretty, in that case, indicated, I'd like to know that we're approving this, but I'd like some additional information to come to council subsequent relative to how the license plate reader program would, would function. And, and we've done that. We've provided that information to you all through the chief of how that would, would be used. And you approved it with that understanding and appropriated it. So from that point on, then what we do is we contract for each of those items that are in there. So we have to go to somebody to buy the ballistic shields. We have to go to somebody to buy the license plate reader and so on. And so that's how that, that particular grant would work. You might also receive a, in the past, we've received a grant that would come from, again, the Attorney General through DCJS that would be used for kind of like, I'll say, violent suppression activities. And very similarly, it'll have a, a list of possible options that you could do. And those could, sometimes those have included things like trauma-informed training. It could include activities to get youth engaged in other sort of nonviolent activities, those types of things. So similarly, you would receive a, an approved grant from the DCJS that would outline those kinds of items. It would be in those kinds of terms. It would be just that general. And at that point, you would have, again, the opportunity to say, okay, well, let's say there's five items on that list, and one of those items you would either want to know more about, could ask at the meeting, obviously. Or there might be an item on there that you would say, yeah, I'm okay with this as a council if these things. And you might put, attach conditions to it, or you might ask that there be a report, you know, six months later, how it was used or turned out and stuff. And, and at that point, you would approve the grant. And similar to the other example I gave, that grant from that point on would then be contracted for those services. And if it were services that, and I'll use the trauma-informed as an example. So we had to go hire someone to actually conduct the trauma-informed training, much like buying those ballistic shields. We would go through the process to hire that, that person. Now, in the case of the Gun Violence Prevention Commission, we've added kind of an additional layer in that we've, much like, I'll use the example in a few minutes with the arts group, we've actually empowered them in some instances to seek out proposals for those services. And then they ultimately decide, okay, that's, that's who we would choose to use. But at the end of the day, you know, we have to, we, the administration has to sign off on the MOUs. The city attorney's office helps us craft to ensure that it's actually conforming with the DCJS requirements, in this case, in this example, similar to what we did with the ARPA examples with it. If, and I'll come back to those in a second. If I shift to the Arts Commission, use the National Endowment for the Arts grant. So very similarly, there was a program announced by the National Endowment for the Arts. An application was filed by the city saying, yes, we'd like to be a part of this program, and here's how. A grant was awarded. That grant, again, spells out, think of the Year of the Artist is a really good example of that, and said, here, you're going to do this Year of the Artist program. These are the kinds of things that would be included in that program. And that's what was presented to you all to accept that grant and to appropriate it. Once it's accepted and appropriated, then the Arts Commission actually solicited multiple times different, different artists to do different kinds of programs, and they did several different collections of those. Similarly, each of those artists have an agreement with the city as to what they'll, what services they will provide and how they will conform with those arts, those requirements of that grant. So using those examples, the point at which you interjected in those projects is at that grant. When you receive that grant and what that grant's going to be used for, that's where the council interjects itself. The, the general fund items, again, are different. So your budget, you might choose to include, let's say we chose to include, well, we do this. We, we do this with arts again. You choose to present for arts. So there's a certain amount of money that's in your budget that goes toward arts to support public arts. Arts Commission, in that instance, very similarly, seeks artists to do certain kinds of programs. However, in that case, because it's general fund, right now, those recommendations come back to you all for final endorsement. So that's when, that's when Doug Jackson will stand here and explain. Here are the 10 or 12 different kind of art projects that we're going to use the present for arts funding for. These are the recommendations of the Art Commission. You concur or not with those. Right now, we do not have, you do not have that provision for the general budget funding piece of that on the Gun Violence Prevention Commission piece. That's what, that's what this would do. Right now, if you approved $100,000, $200,000 general fund money to be used for art, for, for gun violence prevention, you would have some line in that, in that budget to say it's to be used to support youth, youth gang activities suppression. And, but that would be it. You would not see that, again, from that point forward. It would all be handled administratively, other than, you know, kind of an annual reporting out associated with it. This would actually say, in those instances, it would be just like the present for arts. It would come back with recommendations from the Gun Violence Prevention Commission for you to concur or differ with before we actually enter into those agreements for those services. So, so those are kind of, and there's probably 100 other ways that we fund bits and pieces of that, but those are the two big areas and where the current practice for the Gun Violence Prevention Commission differs slightly from the Arts Commission and the Human Service Advisory Board. So hopefully, that gives some clarity to that.
Yeah, I just have one additional question, Mr. Cowell. So those amounts, when it has to go out for proposal, they are, they are explicit somewhere. They are clearly noted, because I know that was one of the issues that we had before with the audit. So, so.
Yeah, you mean the amount.
The amount that we, yeah, what, what the threshold is before we have to ask for RFPs.
Yeah, we would, we would follow our procurement processes. So some things you can do at a low enough amount that are just, well, there's, there's sole service, so there's only one person out there that offers a service. So you get that option. Then there's a lower dollar amount that you can do, which are just really basic quotes.
Right, yeah, sure.
And then you've got others that you actually do. And, and you also sometimes, even when you're not required to do so, you may also, and I know the Gun Violence Prevention Commission has done this, we, we did this with ARPA dollars. You may, because you know there's party, more than one or two parties interested in that service, you may, in those instances, even if you're not required, issue RFPs, because you really do want to try to see who actually is interested in that service, produce those proposals, and then evaluate those proposals. So sometimes, even when it's not required, that, that gets done, just because, again, you're trying to elevate kind of the, the opportunity with it.
Okay, and so I'll, I'll have this one, this is basically a comment, and then I'll be done, Mr. Mayor. We had gotten a letter from the Gun Violence Prevention Commission from the Chair, Vice Mayor Cobb. And I just want to respond to one comment in that letter that was saying that we questioned their integrity. I personally did not question the gun balance integrity. I thought that there were a lot of questions that needed to be answered, and therefore, we needed the audit. And that's just a personal opinion. I'm glad we had the audit. We've learned a lot from that process and have tremendously improved it. So that's just my response to that, to that letter, that we were certainly not questioning their integrity.
And if I could just make a comment, it's the hope that, from our office, that these changes, code, proposed code changes can better outline the process that I heard wanting to be discussed so that the public has even greater confidence that these funds are being reviewed and utilized in an orderly fashion. So that's at least the goal in the draft.
And I did, I should add one additional thing, because at this moment, most of what is being done, particularly through the Gun Violence Prevention Commission, is grant-funded at this moment. And there are exceptions, you know, for example, reset, a reset program is under general fund because we rotated off of a grant. The work of our Youth and Gang Violence Prevention Program is largely off of a grant, I mean, general funded because we rolled off of a grant. However, I would fully expect that going forward, you're going to actually see the majority of these efforts be funded through general fund as grants start to roll down. ARPA fund's not going to be there after, obviously, this coming year. Don't know how long DCJS and the Attorney General will continue to provide funding for this. So I, I would think that as we go through the subsequent budget years, you'll see more dependency on the general fund than you will grant funds, which is more consistent with the rest of our operations. We're just fortunate at this moment in time that we actually can secure grant funding and not depend upon the general fund to do this. But I think that's an important note also, that I think the provision that the city attorneys put in here will start to impact that even more over time as it becomes more dependent on general fund funding to be able to do those activities.
Yeah, that, that makes a lot of sense. And, and I will end by saying I really appreciate the work that the commission has done. And, you know, moving forward, I think we have clear guidelines, and I think it will be a whole lot better. The process seems to be a whole lot better. So I just want to say thank you to the commission for the work that they have done. Not just leave that comment that I questioned their integrity, but also to let them know that I appreciate the work that they've done, and I appreciate the work that the Audit Committee had done.
Ms. Corini in drafting the proposed code.
Ms. Corini.
I have to tip my hat to her.
Yes, all of you guys. Yes, thank you all for, for, for your work on that. I appreciate it.
Well, let me just say this, and I'll come back down. You know. In my, well, let me say this, community safety. In my, well, let me say this, community safety, personally, is my number one priority over everything, as we talked a lot about at the Strategic Planning Retreat. And this council has gotten more scrutiny on gun violence than anything in this city that I've been around for a while. I mean, it's just, because of the circumstances, it's been very scrutinized. And so I understand why the council wants to have a good, clear understanding of how the process works. I, I think the Gun Violence Commission on the things that they've done, but the audit, even though, and, and I'm glad they didn't talk about any fraud or any of that kind of stuff, but there were some things in there that needs to be improved that kind of concerned us. So, as we talk about the Arts Commission and the Human Services Commission, and they are important to us, but nothing moves the needle like gun violence in this community, nothing. And, and the data will show that. So I think what council, the things I've heard from some members of council is how the money is appropriate, do we know certain things? I think we're gonna, the process, you've, you've identified that, and we're gonna work on that. But also, I've heard members, and I think we'll get to that maybe at a later date, the process in terms of choosing members of the Gun Violence Commission itself. You know, that's been a couple of years there, and maybe we need new eyes, whatever, and as a, as a, as. As Ben said, we appreciate the work that they've done, and I share that even with the Vice Mayor. Everybody's volunteer here, and we, we really appreciate the work. But I think the council wants to look at that and possibility, at some point, this is not affecting what you're doing, but at some point, we're gonna say, hey, Al Smith, a retired police officer, that's an example, not that, may want to serve on this Gun Violence Prevention Committee. Those are the kind of things we may want to implement as a council. And I think that doesn't affect what we're doing today, does it?
No. My hope is, is that what Laura has crafted here and what we've presented to council provides a structure and a process, as well as greater transparency to the public on how these funds are being expended. There's a check and a balance. Remember, all these boards and commission are, are advisory boards. They are not spending the money. The audit made that clear as well, that the ultimate person spending the money was where the money was appropriated to, which was the city, and that's under the direction of our city manager.
All right.
And Ms. Mayor.
Hold on, I'm not done yet. But I do want to, and, and we'll continue to talk about that as we look up the makeup of the Gun Violence Commission in terms of council saying, okay, this is a person I'm recommending. We need to have that discussion among ourselves on that. And I'm hoping that that will come up. I'm sure that will come up. But I'm gonna recognize Ms. Moon Reynolds, and then I'll come back to you, Mr. Pritte.
Thank you.
Thank you. There was a couple of things that you said, Bob, that I just need to understand, and some of it I do.
Sure.
When you mentioned, when, when Councilmember Whiteboard had asked the question about examples, and you gave the examples about the gun violence prevention, and you mentioned about the law enforcement grant. We know other localities around the state had received similar grants. So that was fine. And with regards to the violence suppression, you mentioned, you know, like the trauma and youth engagement. My question is, couldn't, is most of this being handled administratively with staff that you would not necessarily have to empower the Gun Violence Commission to handle?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, we, the, and I'll use the example of the bold blue line funding that went through DCJS. That was handled, that piece was handled completely administratively. So it was the, it was the Police Department through the chief that identified what resources they were seeking out of that particular funding. That was submitted to me. I approved that to be included. That then showed up in the grant that you ultimately approved. So, so yes, and, you know, in some ways, there probably, and, and, you know, we use some of these examples of Human Resources Service Board and also the Arts Commission. There could be items like that also that we would do administratively. I think the idea of the Gun Violence Prevention Commission getting involved was another opportunity to have folks that you all appointed actually being involved in making those choices moving forward. But absolutely, it could be handled administratively, completely independent of the Commission if ultimately that was the direction that council wanted to, wanted to go with.
Yeah, because that's where I, I'm getting a little confused, because, and I know we are looking, trying to, to figure out what the purpose is for the Gun Violence Commission, because when he was appointed, it came right behind the task force. And then things just started happening with no process in place. And now we're trying to back in and put a process in place to give more authority for me, and I can only speak for me, giving authority or empowering the Gun Violence Commission to do more than what I see the administration should be doing, or the, that, that the manager should be assigning through the Police Department for, for enforcement dealing with gun violence, because that's where the expertise, for me, that's where the expertise should be. And also looking at what Chris Roberts' role is, the part of the task force was to hire a gun violence prevention, I guess, coordinator.
Yeah, the youth and, youth and gang.
Youth advisor, okay, so when we deal with youth and what his role would be, in my mind, that's where his role should be, working with youth or using that type of funding. And then you mentioned something about the procurement with the gun, with some of the gun violence money. I, I'm glad we're changing that process for transparency, because as you know, when we looked at, I guess I want to say contracting with a organization for, my word would be, conflict resolution, it was not put out in procurement. It was specifically written for that organization, even though general fund money was used as well as grant money. And now we're saying that even though we may go with a sole contractor or sole source, we would look also now at others who might have the same, be able to offer the same type of services.
We, we would, we have.
Right.
Always followed the city's procurement requirements, and we would continue to do so. There may be instances, as I mentioned, where you want to actually, and we have, you want to go beyond what those minimum requirements are, you know, just for, for different reasons. I'll use a totally unrelated example with the ARPA funding, where one of our affordable housing initiative that we put out in, in place, we certainly could have, under our procurement mechanisms, under the ARPA requirements, could simply have granted a subrecipient agreement to Habitat and just said, you go with it. Instead, we issued an RFP to say who is out there that is interested in doing this, and ultimately, they put together a consortium that made a proposal, and then we entered into a subrecipient agreement. We didn't have to do that.
Right.
We just wanted to do that in order to give more opportunity for folks to actually express an interest in, in doing that piece. But I, I do want to make sure that it's clear that our past practices were aligned with procurement procedures, and our future practices will continue to be. We may choose to go beyond those along the way as well. So just, just want to make sure that that's clear. And, and I think, just wanted to comment also on mentioning the youth and gang violence prevention is, that, remember, that position did, just like Reset, actually begin with one of those DCJS grants.
Right, it came out of a grant fund, yes.
Right, and then.
And then became a permanent position.
Right, and with your help, we were able to rotate that with council's approval and the funding and the budget. We rotated those over into general fund provisions. And even, even that particular one is not fully general fund funded yet. We still have outreach workers that are under the grant program associated with that. And the other thing, I just want to make sure, and, and you all have kind of alluded to it, I want to make sure everybody knows, while we're talking about, obviously, in this case, the funding that's coming in, the Gun Violence Prevention Commission is involved in making recommendations on pursuing whatever it might be. I, I still want to, it's really important to recognize that the city's response, and you've already kind of alluded to this, the city's response to gun violence does not rest solely with the Gun Violence Prevention Commission, that it is integrated, obviously, in the police, first and foremost, in the Police Department. I mean, crime prevention is first and foremost the responsibility of the Police Department, and the work that they're doing, it is further supplemented by, like, our youth and gang violence prevention coordinator and those efforts and those programs. And then there's a place of certain activities that the Gun Violence Prevention Commission is involved in also, along with Commonwealth Attorney's Office and a whole host of others. So I don't want, there, there's always been this sort of, and maybe it's in the naming of the Commission, I don't know, but there's always been this sort of assumption that the city's response to gun violence is the Gun Violence Prevention Commission, and that is inaccurate.
Thank you for saying that, thank you.
That is a piece of, yeah, it's a piece of that. But, I mean, obviously, law enforcement is the, the core piece of that, but you all have been very clear that, you know, law enforcement alone will not, never has anywhere solved gun violence, and that it requires a much broader reach, which is what the city is engaged in. So I just wanted to make sure, and then again, you've mentioned a couple of those other players that are in it. I want to make sure that folks understand that.
Thank you for that.
That might be doing.
And the other thing that, a part of this measure that we are looking to adopt, there's a couple of things in the membership that I would like council to give thought to, and it says that we can also put members on there that are not city residents, the non-city residents can also serve. I would prefer to take that out and make sure it is city residents to serve on the Gun Violence Commission and not any outside of the city having an opportunity to serve.
Mr. Mayor.
And one other thing, Luke, before you, since I have the floor. And the other part was, make sure, that may be it. Let me make sure here, if you bear with me one minute. And the other parts that you're putting in, Tim, number four, five, six, and seven, into the Gun Violence Commission's measure, are those saying four, five, six, and seven items listed in the Arts Commission as well as the Human?
Number seven is more the same.
Right, I know number seven is because you're amending the other two.
Four, five, and six are more clarified, I think, just make more clear how it will work, a little bit more process.
Okay.
City, I, I do think that one of those numbers is already in the Arts Commission, the, the offering, seeking the donations.
Yes.
So some of those items are already there.
Yes, number six is.
Hold on, Pritte, you're gonna get your chance. I, I'm, Ms. Moon has the floor.
Thank you, Mayor.
You'll get your chance.
Appreciate it, Mr. Mayor. The other one was, under number seven, and for whatever reason I highlighted this, for annual funding under the general fund, and Bob, I believe you answered this, and I just want to be clear.
Sure.
Subject to administrative procedures by you, reviewing the applications, requests for funding made to the city by private nonprofit agencies. And then you, you said advise the council. So this is standard procedure, Tim, I guess now I can come back to you, Tim, that is in the others.
Yes, if you flip over to the next, you'll see that the only red language is.
On the G.
Annual funding.
Uh-huh.
But you'll see that the rest of the language.
Right, okay.
Mirrors the language that you see in all red in number seven.
Right, that it is the same as G and the, okay.
I do think, I do think, just to be clear, the administrative process obviously will differ. The way in which we ultimately solicit interest for something we might be doing with gun violence is likely to be different than what we might be doing with the Arts Commission and likely different.
That's what I'm asking, okay.
Yeah, and that, that will, and, and even that probably will vary depending on the grant or the source of funding. But really, to the mayor's point initially is, you know, there, there are certainly, though we're trying to align all of these together, so they're, they're following the same practices, there are obviously things that we would do with funding in the Arts Commission that might be more fluid, more dynamic, more whatever than it would be with the, with the Gun Violence Prevention Commission. Because in some cases, we're, we're literally talking about providing a $500 stipend to an artist. That's very different than, you know, a $20,000 or a $50,000 contract for someone that's actually going to do something for us that is tied with gun violence. So, so I think, Tim is correct, that this language is the same in each of those groups. The actual administrative procedures will differ.
Will differ, okay. And my last question is, with regards to what was in the Audit Committee's report about the oversight, that was one of the marks that, that was given with regards to how that process worked and the oversight of the grant funding that went to those organizations, there was not, there was no process in place, no reporting. Will the administration now have, have an individual or have staff that will be overseeing?
Yeah, well, I'll start first by saying we disagreed with that conclusion. That was in our, in our statements, that those, there was oversight, there was reporting, what there was not. The distinction in the audit was, rightfully so, the auditor polled some of those particular grants and in effect audited them, asked, asked for, I want to see copies of your receipts, I want to see copies of those, and it was hit and miss as to whether or not they received that information. Reporting, we don't do that. We don't do that for any, any contract that we actually, everyone is required to retain those records, so that if we demand those records through an audit, they have to deliver those. But we don't get, we don't get boxes of receipts from folks. You know, if we contract for a, a bridge construction, we get the bridge constructed. They have to retain all that information, but they're not showing up at our door with every dollar that they spent, and here's, here's proof of that piece of it. We're contracting with them to do a service, and inside that contract is saying, you must retain these records and produce them. And that was part of what was shown in the audit.
Right, and the produce piece, yes.
So, so yes, that, so that procedurally, that oversight still exists. All of those reports are current. Whether or not, if an audit demanded those requirements be met through it, don't know. You won't know that until you actually audit those spot. That's why those spot audits are important to be able to do.
Just, just like giving, when you gave, when the Gun Violence Commission gave the money upfront, and you have two years to spend, let's say $27,000. There is no oversight during the process to ensure that the money is being spent within the guidelines of the contract.
Yeah, there, there would be. So in that, so there's an MOU that spells out what the funding can be used for, and as you said, sometimes it's said by this time. So you have those kinds of things in there. There is regular reporting as to what they're doing with that. And that reporting does two, two things for us. One is, one, it ensures that we're getting the dollars spent in the way in which they're supposed to be spent. The other is, it's also an indicator, if for some reason the money's not being spent, that then there can be further conversation. And in a couple of cases, there were funds requested to be returned, because they, they, at that point, let us know, I can't spend these dollars, they're not being spent the way in which that they were intended to do. So that kind of reporting has always gone on and will continue to go on. It was the more detailed sort of reporting or audit information that we don't do. And again, we, we don't do that with any of the contracts that we have until we get into an audit associated with those. And I'm not just talking about the Gun Violence Prevention Commission, I'm talking about all of the contracts that we do.
Right, because I know there was an instance where money, where reports were being requested, and they were not filed, and there was follow-up, and still nothing was done until almost near the end of the contract, and the, and funding had to be requested, to be returned.
Yes, and I'm, and I, I'd have to go back and look whether those were reports that we were requesting, because there were definitely also instances where the auditor was requesting audit information, and that was not being presented in a timeless fashion.
No, this one was where the city was requesting, administration was requesting.
And that, and that will happen. I mean, we will have times where a report that they're required to file is not being filed, and then we have to have follow-up action. And in that instance, that follow-up action ultimately resulted in their requirement to return the, return the funds.
Yes, yes, okay.
And that, that has been and will continue to go on.
Okay.
And, and again, those were mostly ARPA-funded projects that we're talking about. The, the requirements for DCJS funding sometimes are even more elevated than that, because we're in turn reporting back to DCJS on those items also.
And that's one other point, if I might, members of council, just make clear, that spending grant funds is a little bit different than general funds, because oftentimes you have requirements within the grant as to how it must be spent. Or, as Councilmember Moon pointed out, that there might be an application made jointly with an organization where it's already contemplated that the funds will go to this organization for this, because that was part of the successful grant. So I don't want to let council, lead council with the impression that there must be an RFP or request for bid on every bit of grant funding. Sometimes there are, a lot of times we go beyond that, but sometimes the grants dictate Sometimes there are, a lot of times we go beyond that, but sometimes the grants dictate all the.
Well, this one was with grants and general fund. There was a mix, there was both. They gave the total of the amount, total amount, and that's what I was concerned about. There was no procurement because gr- general funds were being used, and it was over the threshold amount, but no procurement was made.
Yeah, and I guess also picking up something that, um, Tim said to make it a little more confusing, and I don't want to get too much in the weeds here with this, is, so there are, um, there are services that we're trying to procure.
Yes.
And then there are, for lack of a better term, partnerships that we enter into, um, this was especially true with, with ARPA funding. So there are sub-recipient agreements, I'll go back to my affordable housing example, um, that, that I was using earlier, where if we enter into an agreement, even though we went through a RFP process for it, we entered into an agreement with Habitat. Habitat is a, is a nonprofit, and they are, they are carrying out, um, really an extension of what it is that we would otherwise be doing ourselves, and we entered into a sub-recipient agreement with them. Basically, we're just taking the federal dollars and passing them through to them, subject to all of the rules associated with it. That is different than if we're trying to procure a product or a service, um, so if we're trying to, go back to my ballistic shield example, if we're trying to buy ballistic shields, um, then that's a different process because we're most often dealing with a for-profit business versus a not-for-profit service provider, and so the procurement process is slightly different for, for those also, so.
Yeah, this was a service provider, this was not a nonprofit.
Yeah, we've had a couple of service provisions in the funding with the Gun Violence Prevention Commission, the majority of them have been sub-recipients with other nonprofits that we've entered into, but I, it is a distinction that I think is often lost kind of in, in the conversation, um, and, and again, somewhat down in the weeds, but important for folks to understand that there is that difference, um, in the procurement rules for buying that product or service are much more stringent than entering into the sub-recipient agreements.
Yeah, and that's why I was concerned, because no procurement was done in that instance, yes.
Well, again.
Right.
Procurement was, procurement requirements were followed.
Yes.
City procurement requirements followed, I don't want to leave the impression that, you know, it may not have been what some on council might have wished it to be, but it was aligned with what the city's requirements are under procurement, because I don't want to leave the impression that it was procured unlawfully, because that is not the case.
Yeah, well, in this instance, and I don't want to debate it, but I was, uh, I, I spoke with the attorney's office about it, and they just said there was, it was not necessary to procure, so, uh, because of, uh, it was written for that, and, uh, I just asked the question because general funds were used. Okay, thank you. I'm done, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Let me just say something, I'm coming right to you, Ms. Pretty. Let me say something, one of the rules that I have here is that when I give the floor to any of you, you're the governing body, I want you to have the floor as long as you got the floor. You, you have the floor to ask questions, it's important that, I want everyone to understand what we're voting on, each of us, to know what we're voting on. So I respect the questions, I may not even agree with it myself, but I have, I have to respect each one's right to ask the questions, to do those some things, to get an understanding of what we're voting on, because once we vote on it, even though Mr. Spencer said we could always come back, but once we vote on it, as far as I'm concerned, that's the policy, that's what we're doing. But I just don't want anybody really interrupt someone when they have the floor, that's the only thing I ask. And so, Ms. Pretty, the floor is yours.
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I already pre-wrote the apology in my head to apologize for the outburst, I was just attempting to provide more information to a question Ms. Moon had asked, and I wasn't sure if the city attorney had provided all of that at that moment, but, but I, I do apologize for speaking out of turn. Um, uh, I think a lot of comments here have been important, that they're warranted regarding the discussion as the broader scope of the Gun Violence Commission, especially as it relates to membership that we may want to have at a later point in time, and I, I fully expect we will, largely as, uh, we are going to need to discuss whether or not a certain amount of, um, annual general fund will be considered for this purpose, and I think that would be the time with which we may want to consider, are there additional perspectives that we would like to see included on the Gun Violence Commission? I'd say at this time, I would prefer not replaced perspectives, but maybe additional perspectives that, that may be helpful to their operation of business. But as it relates to, to what this is more narrowly, um, focused on in a discussion we had a few months ago, um, and even delayed as a result, is making sure that we standardize a process that is being followed, um, one that is, um, similar and mirrors our other boards and commissions with the, the Arts Commission or Human Services Advisory Board. I want to thank the city attorney for taking the time to, well, I guess Laura, really, uh, for putting this together to make sure that, that this is right, um, and that, uh, we really do, um, have a process to, to follow with that. But as these discussions come up for annual general fund, I, I expect that, um, this, this topic will resurface, and we will want to visit what, what the makeup is and how we want to define that scope. But as it relates to what we charge the city attorney with doing and, and the information that we receive back from the audit, I believe that this ordinance, uh, gets to that purpose completely, uh, and with that, just to, this does not limit discussion moving forward, but, but I would like to move the ordinance, if there's a second.
Well, I think what we would say, and what, what I'm hearing is, is as Mr. Spencer mentioned earlier, that we can either move on it, vote on it, and come back this afternoon with an ordinance that says what we need to do, and we can take action on it at that time, or we can say we need further information or go on it. I, I want, personally, I think we can move on it, but I want to make sure, my whole purpose is making sure everybody's clear on what we're doing, and, and there are no questions that are left out there regarding that. Yes, sir?
I have no problems with adopting the measure this evening, I just want to, to hear from my colleagues here, uh, are they willing to, to just make sure that the membership, the residents of the city, uh, taken out unless such residency requirement is waived by the city council in accordance, uh, with the code section.
Now, Mr. Mayor, if I can reply.
Okay.
Sorry.
All right, the person had the floor, the spirit didn't have the floor.
It, it was only good to reply to that issue, Tom. Well, I was going to provide feedback to her question.
Well, you can get back, I'm gonna get back, let me finish to what I'm hearing, I can't hear, finish that, and then we'll come back to you if there's some question, and Spencer's right there, so, uh...
That's my question, Mayor, is that, I just wanted to hear from my, you know, hear from the council, uh, if they have any concerns with regards to it just being solely for, that it's things that shall be residents of the city, uh, for the government's.
I, I don't have any problem, matter of fact, I thought, well, most of them were residents of the city.
Right, I just...
Uh, council, further discussion?
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
As appropriate, um, I, I still think that, that, that piece that Councilmember Moon brings up is, uh, warrantable for some point in the future, but as this is in front of us, it's, it does not relate to membership, and formalizing these practices does not relate to the, the residency of those per, persons. We do when we appoint people to boards and commissions, um, make a vote of whether or not we're going to waive residency at that time, that those actions have happened separately from here. Uh, I would not want to take any action that can inextricably limit current persons who are serving, uh, on the commission or otherwise, but i- if when we go forward, um, to discuss changing the membership or adding additional perspectives, and that is something that the council wants to look at doing, I hope we'd adopt it at that time, but the scope of this ordinance is not related to the membership, and I hope that we would not in, include that as part of this discussion.
Well, let me, uh, uh, are you finished, sir?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay, let me say that, we will discuss changing and looking at members of the, of the Gun Violence Prevention, we will. Uh, the only question I would ask, Mr. Spencer, is can we do that now, if that's not involved in what we're doing now?
What I would like to do, if council wants to make this change, what I would recommend if we could is I sit down and again, make sure that I fully understand what Ms. Moon Reynolds wants to do, and that we bring this back as a package, all three this afternoon, and vote on it then. That way, it's moving in a little bit more orderly fashion, we get it addressed, we get something that council has been considering for a long time, taken care of, but we make sure that Ms. Moon Reynolds' concerns about residency are addressed within our changes, and we can make that happen.
Okay, I'm satisfied with that.
I'm satisfied with that.
All right, Vice Mayor.
Luke, do you have something? Because I'm, I'm gonna be a while.
Just, just as, just as procedurally, in, in order to do that, um, we, we may make no motion in the negative, so I would rather hear that there be some motion to amend this ordinance to include it, and we come out with a vote of whether or not that will be considered in the draft. Um, otherwise, I mean, personally, I would prefer that it not be in there, but if it's an item that this council can vote on, so that the city attorney has appropriate direction about which version to have prepared for this afternoon. Do you, do you, I'm, I'm asking Councilmember Moon Reynolds that if she would like for that to be an amendment, that, that she makes some motion to this council to vote on whether or not that amendment be included.
Exactly, I was gonna bring that up, Councilmember Pretty, that I would like to see if there's a consensus from the council to take that non, uh, take out the residency, uh, non-city residents to, to serve, uh, to waive that residency requirement, I would prefer, I strongly prefer that it be city residents, since we are dealing with the gun violence and not looking at non-city residents serving on this commission.
All right, do we need it, what do you need to go work on that?
If you do a quick vote, then I know I got a majority of council that want it in there, and I'll have it in there.
All right, is there a majority of council? You might, go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. With it, when it comes to redes, re, uh, sorry, residency waivers, a lot of times when we, when people apply for a board, um, hold on a second, let me get back to this.
Take your time, take your time.
A lot of times, uh, when people apply for boards, we reconsider their benefit of them serving on the board, and when we waive it, it's because we don't have somebody locally that is qualified, and sometimes people may not live in the city, but they work in the city, and they're quite aware of the issues. That's my only concern that I have, that we should consider, uh, the waiver qualifications on a need basis. Each case is different, and that's what I'm, that's my concern on that.
And, Ms. Mayor, just to clarify, and this might resolve everything, if I can go back under section two dash three oh six A, it says, other than, uh, one member shall be a member of city council, and the remaining eight shall be residents of the city unless such residency requirement is waived by city council in accordance with city code section two dash two eighty-one. Doesn't that satisfy what most of your concerns are, Ms. Moon?
Yes, yes.
That's already in there.
Okay, I'm fine.
So...
You got, you got the marching orders on that.
Okay.
That's fine.
I've got my marching orders, I think, so we don't need any other changes, and I apologize for taking so long to find it.
That's all right, that helped me, I just needed understanding.
Okay.
Seek understanding, be understood, thank you.
Thank you.
And just to, uh, if I may, Mayor, just to belabor the conversation further, um, I, I really, i- if there, I've heard kind of, uh, it appears some kind of consensus that there is a desire to discuss the other items that are associated with the commission, its membership, its composition, those kinds of things, so, um, we, is that, and I've also heard ideas of talking about that everywhere from budget to here, um, at a meeting, I mean, at this moment, or also at a, at a subsequent meeting, so I guess my question, is there a consensus that indeed you do want to have that conversation around the rest of this section, if you will, and the composition in particular, and then that's part one, and then part two, um, are you, yeah, well, you can schedule that for any upcoming meeting, are you comfortable doing that in, in this meeting? Do you want something separate and apart to talk about that? How, how would, do you want to have that conversation, and how would you prefer to have that conversation, I guess is the question.
Okay. Uh... Okay, are we, Vice Mayor?
Well, I, I just want to comment on a couple of things for follow-up. Um, we did have a joint meeting in May and thoroughly discussed, uh, a lot of things. I believe the purpose is very clear, I believe the addition of the funding makes it even clearer. Um, in terms of process, uh, we consulted with the city attorney's office, the city manager's office, the whole scope of our work to make sure we, we were aligned legally and with management on process. Could we have strengthened it? Yes. Uh, at no time in the last two years, as council said, the process was broken, it was only recently that this came up, or earlier this year, uh, so I have some concerns about that, but I just want to reiterate, our purpose is clear, and it's made even clearer by this, uh, addition to the ordinance. Um, we have a lot of expertise, uh, specifically related to gun violence reduction and prevention on the commission. While I understand the importance of having city residents on this, if we were to change that stipulation for the gun violence permission, I think we would need to change it for all of our boards and commissions. I don't think we should pick out one commission to say it's only city residents when the rest have a residency waiver. I, okay, but I think we've cleared that up. Um, I want to remind council that were it not for the Gun Violence Prevention Commission's efforts, uh, we would have not received the, the funding, the gun violence prevention funding, we would not have received the Attorney General funding. The commission worked very closely through partnerships to, uh, help ensure that the city would receive that funding, and, um, and I, I don't know that that has been fully appreciated or acknowledged. Um, with the matter of the conflict resolution program, uh, it has been confirmed that, uh, the appropriate process was followed. Um, I would also add, and the audit report did not mention this, while there were some questions about reporting and monitoring, the commission took it upon itself, uh, to add an additional layer of monitoring, um, with liaisons from the commission to, to connect with everyone who received funding to make sure they were on track, and we continue to do that. That, that has never been acknowledged, but it is something that we do. Uh, we're not required to do that, that's just an additional layer to support the, the partnerships that we have. Um, I think one important thing that we have not addressed, and I think this is where council probably feels a bit frustrated, and that is, I think we would like, as a council, to give more insight into where, um, we look for funding, not, not where we look for it, but the topics, what, what do we see as priorities? The mayor said it perfectly, that community safety is a top priority for us. How do we best address that? You know, yesterday, many, several of us and over sixty community partners participated in a Zoom call hosted by the, um, uh, the ceasefire operator coordinator and the AG's office on, um, group violence intervention, and what a program like that might look like in Roanoke, and it's specifically focused on the, the violent offender, and, uh, interrupting that as soon as possible so that there is no retaliation, so there is no, you know, uh, there are no additional acts of violence. And it's a very comprehensive program, and I think the city is equipped to do that. One of the benefits of having a program like that is it builds on what we already have in place, those community partners, that community engagement. But I think, and during our retreat, Trish raised a really important point, um, that I think is a gap, um, and that is, while we have the reset team, which goes immediately, I mean, they go soon after, what we don't currently have is a trauma response team that goes, is onsite, you know, almost immediately, uh, to work alongside the police, and though, to have that kind of a team, you need to have pretty highly trained people. I, I'm not sure that that's for volunteers, unless they're specifically trained to do that. But those kinds of gaps, that I think if council said, look, we want a trauma response team, we want a group, uh, violence intervention program, if they could give that direction to city management and to the Gun Violence Prevention Commission, that gives us help in knowing what we need to seek out for funding and what we need to determine as priorities. And I think that's been a piece that's been missing, uh, in our work, and I, I would hope that council, as we go forward, could say, these, like, these are three priorities that we are really important to us, that we think will address community safety and reduce violence. We empower the commission and management to find out what programs are out there, how we can implement those, what kind of funding that's going to take, and bring that information back to council so that we can get it activated. I just wanted to share those observations. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, anybody else have any? All right, Ms. Moon.
Last time, the city manager asked a couple of questions that I think we have not answered to give him direction on, uh, I think we need to answer.
I would appreciate that.
And, thank you, and the other thing is following up on what the Vice Mayor said, and just for me, is not to complicate things, uh, when you talk about, uh, seeking, um, funding, that, uh, the gun violence is very instrumental in doing that, and not necessarily would have happened without you, I count... would have happened without you, I kind of have a little disagreement with that. But at the same time, you talk about, uh, being empowered to work with the manager, uh, or the administration on, um, seeking that middle piece for trauma. I just want to ask the question, under the administration, isn't that something that would come through the law enforcement, uh, department, and I mean law, with the public safety aspect of it, working with management?
Yeah, I think the, and, and this goes back to something the mayor said, I think, at the beginning, which is this, this issue, and it's not the only issue. I mean, you have issues around homelessness, mental health, and, and drug use that are in many ways as significant in our community as, as what's going on. And it requires really kind of an all-hands-on. So, um, I don't think it's fair, appropriate, productive for the, the council to, from the dais, kind of originate ideas and say we should be doing X, Y, Z. You, you need the assistance of the folks that are, are out doing the work. And in this case, that is, you should be, in order to do what the vice mayor has said, which is council provide direction on those priorities, you should be receiving information from, um, from me. You should be receiving information from the police chief and the police department, um, through me and, and directly also. Um, and in this case, you have established the Gun Violence Prevention Commission also, which clearly, one of the purposes was for them to, to investigate best practices and ways in which others are addressing in, at these. So I think that, plus then obviously you all, um, in your interactions with the community, are bringing all of those together so that you can provide that type of direction. So yes, I think it is, um, essential in those. And, and again, I mentioned the other things around homelessness and the other things around mental health, and, and we've got similar structures set up
Mm-hmm.
to try to advise the council so that you can give us then the direction to say, you know, some, some different kind of, um, focus or where you want to be. I, I think a, a really good example of this is, the mayor has indicated in a couple of instances that, you know, he would like to see elevated in the work that's going on, particularly around the, the work of the Gun Violence Prevention Commission, that there be more, um, more law enforcement influence, for lack of a better word, kind of in, in the work that they're doing.
Yes.
And, and I think under interim Chief Stokes, that has already kind of begun to evolve further. I know it will with, uh, with Chief Booth. But it's still within the benefit of the Gun Violence Prevention Commission. So that's my long way of answering and saying, really, I think you need to have all of the above.
Right.
All of that information coming to you from all of those sources, so that you can provide the direction that's necessary for us to be able to figure out where we spend our money and our time
Yes.
and our resources.
Yes. Thank you for clearing that up.
Sure.
That's what I was seeking. Thank you.
Mr. Spencer, you?
And to answer the mayor's, the mayor, we still need to answer Bob's question. Bob, will you restate those?
Yeah, this is really just the question, really, it's a two-part question, which is, you know, is it a consensus of the council that you want to revisit the composition of the commission, the makeup, the membership, those kinds of things? That's part one. And then part two, if it is, are you comfortable with that conversation taking place as a scheduled agenda item? Do you want to have a, a joint meeting? Do you want to have a separate conversation? How would you like to proceed with that if you do want to have that conversation? So I just would like some guidance on that, so I can get those scheduled however they need to be scheduled.
All right, any thoughts, council members?
Mr. Mayor, justice was stated previously. I, I do think it's warrantable to have a discussion about potentially additional perspectives being included on the commission. My hope would be not replacing and, um, not committing to any, um, vote on any outcome of changing the commission, uh, at some point in the future. But, um, I mean, at the very least, to make sure all seven members of council can be here, and we discuss what additional perspectives are we really seeking to, to include. And my hope is that it would not change the commission really otherwise.
Well, I can go on with that, and, uh, we are missing one council member. Any other thoughts?
The only thought I have is that we will have an in-depth discussion about the membership. Uh, how, uh, not the structure or the members itself, but we did talk at one time about whether or not a council member should serve on the commission. That I think we do need to talk, and I don't think we can discuss that in closed session. That is something that will have to be discussed openly. So we do need to talk about that.
And I would recommend then that we have another joint meeting, since I think
That's fine.
We'll have another meeting.
Yeah, I think
That's fine.
the commission should be present to give
And is it, is, is a joint meeting with the commission, with the Gun Violence Prevention Commission to have that discussion? Is that, everybody's comfortable with that? Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, then we, we will start working on
Okay.
on that piece. And the, the objective will be to have that scheduled before we get really ramped up for budget development, because I think it, it could have some effect as we go forward with, with that piece. But not before the budget retreat, which is coming up at the beginning of November, but certainly before we really get moving in. Okay, all right.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I, I appreciate that.
Okay.
And for my part, Ms. Mayor, my understanding is I'll bring this back this afternoon for vote on all three measures.
Right. Vote up or down.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Spencer, eight. All right, that concludes our filing. Am I right, Madam Plur?
Yes, sir.
Briefings. Uh, so what we'll do, the legislative committee, Mr. Pretty, is, that meeting has been counseled.
Yeah, I can, I can make a brief comment now, but I'll go into a little bit more during the reports of committees, cause I think it's a more appropriate place. Just this whole Monday, Thursday thing, um, I, I feel like that's just enough to say. But in order to get enough people here and even enough members of council was rather complicated, so decided to postpone that ultimately. But during reports of the committees, uh, this afternoon, I'll also solicit from members, um, wh- when they think that presentation should take place based on a, a number of options.
All right. Okay, with that, council will stand in recess, and we'll go into closed meeting, and we'll return at two PM. Thank you.
You can make your job a climate job, and you can use your levers at your workplace in order to drive climate action in the workplace. So I would say to those folks, I feel your frustration.